Buenas, good morning. I mean, at 26, now the head of the tour in Guam is called to order. I would ask colleagues to bear in mind our safety precautions, to wear masks at all times, wherever possible, please keep a distance of six feet and wash your hands. Thank you. We will begin with the prayer, and I call upon Senator Ada to please lead us in prayer. Please rise.
Let us begin this day and remember as we journey through it that to be good and true is a lesson that we are taught. Let us carry in our heart and mind and exemplify in our every action the fact that truth is divine, is a divine attribute and the foundation of every virtue. Most holy and gracious Lord God, the giver of all good and of all good gifts and graces, Thou hast promised that where two or three are gathered together in Thy name, Thy will be in their midst and bless them. In Thy name we have assembled and in Thy name we desire to proceed in all our doings. Grant that our legislators may so subdue every discordant passion within us, so harmonize and enrich our hearts with Thy own love and goodness that this legislative body may humbly reflect that order and beauty which reigns forever before Thy throne. Amen.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Imeladza Mastakiluna sacrificio on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imeladza Mastakiluna sacrificio, Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Recognition of a recipient of Imeladza Mastakiluna sacrificio. On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Stewart's Mate Third Class Petty Officer, Frank Ellis Tovis, and the family of Stewart's Mate Third Class Petty Officer Frank Ellis Tovis for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
For the recitation of Inifresi, will Senator Rogel kindly lead us? With Senator Perez kindly lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn and Senator Moylan lead us in singing of the national anthem. Madam Clerk, please take roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Nelson. Senator Perez. Senator Rogel. Senator San Augustine. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegui. Senator Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi. Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Sizouas Massey, Madam Clerk. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, Manana Sizouas. Colleagues, I move to approve the Legislative Journal dated December 6, 2021, and December 15, 2021, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve the Legislative Journals dated December 6 and December 15, 2021, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imaga Hagan Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that messages from Imaga Hagan Guam be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journals, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, there are no reports for select committees.
Thank you, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, bill numbers 224-36COR through 228-36COR, 229-36LS through 233-36LS, and 234-36COR through 239-36COR, and resolutions introduced, resolution numbers 212-36COR through 218-36COR, 219-36LS through 230-36LS, and 231-36COR through 242-36COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion, as to the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now in motions. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion as to resolutions, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Assistant Majority Leader, Legislative Secretary, Acting Vice Speaker, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as cosponsors.
On that motion as to resolutions, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are still on motions, are there any other motions? Senator San Augustine, you are recognized. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator. Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Apologies, Madam Speaker, I'll yield to Senator San Augustine, and I'll make my next motions at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place nomination of Dr. John J. Rivera to serve as member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners onto the session agenda.
On that motion, on the nomination of Dr. John J. Rivera, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, are there any other motions? Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I like to advise the members, my colleagues, that I will be resubmitting the committee report for bill number 173-36LS as substituted.
Would you like to just briefly explain if the re-substitution for the benefit of the members?
It's for purposes of the voting, the voting record, it's being resubmitted, that's all, thank you.
All right, so noted. Under motions, is there any other motion? If not, then we are on legislative concurrences, and Senator, Assistant Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized. All right, Senator San Augustine, you are recognized under legislative concurrence.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, the nomination of Dr. John J. Rivera to serve as member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environmental Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Marilyn R. Bora to serve as member of the Guam Ethics Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, the nomination of Marilyn R. Bora to serve as member of the Guam Ethics Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, the nomination of Sharon Jo Davis to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, the nomination of Mark Anthony Duardi to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Elizabeth T. Fisher to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Do you have more, Senator?
Yes, I have two more.
Okay, okay, we're gonna go in the clerk's order if you don't mind. So I'll recognize Senator Perez right now, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, the nomination of Sharon Jo Davis to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, the nomination of Mark Anthony Duardi to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place the nomination on the voting files, are there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Elizabeth T. Fisher to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination in the voting files, are there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Andrew M. Gell, Jr. to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination in the voting files, are there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of John E. G. Ilaw to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination in the voting files, are there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts, the nomination of Al Edric Lebang to serve as a youth member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place that nomination in the voting file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Rogel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts, the nomination of Michael A. Pangolin to serve as a member-at-large representative of the Public Utilities Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place that nomination in the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and Housing, the nomination of Nathaniel P. Sanchez to serve as member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination in the voting file, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on consent calendar, there are no items, and so we will proceed to second reading file. First bill and second reading file is bill number 41-36COR. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouas Massey, Madam Speaker, I move to pass on file bill 41-36 and place at the bottom of the agenda after bill 185-36.
So to move the bill down to the bottom of the agenda, below bill 185, is there any objection on that motion? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I also move to pass on file bill number 83-36 down to the bottom of the agenda.
On that motion to move bill 83-36 to the bottom of the second reading folder, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on bill number 142-36LS. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move to place bill number 142-36LS as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture into the third reading file, but I always liked the opportunity to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, bill number 142-36LS is an act to amend section 25.30 of chapter 25, Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to adding more protection for minor victims under the offense of fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct and ensuring that the offense of fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct against a minor cannot be reduced from a felony of the third degree to a misdemeanor. Madam Speaker, what this basically will provide, and this is after consultation with the office of the Attorney General and those prosecutors, those attorneys that are charged with prosecuting criminal sexual conduct cases, they found a gap that existed in being able to prosecute, successfully prosecute, and then put the, I would say, the teeth into the offense or into the crime. There was a gap between the ages of 13 and 17, that 14 to 16-year age, and one of the things that we can basically assume in this thing is that in the discussion of the age of consent, there was a concern as to whether or not, you know, at the age of consent, these individuals in that discussion of the crime, of the offense, you know, was inadvertently, hopefully, or left out. So what this bill attempts to do is basically address that gap of those, to cover those victims between the ages of 14 and 16, so that the offense that's committed to them and the degree that is committed, that there's a proper, the proper offense, that it is a felony of the third degree and is not a misdemeanor. It does recognize, though, that in the cases of whether the actor, the individual who is the offender of the case is the first-time offender, and that the victim of the offense, the victim of the crime is 18 years of age and older, that it does, that it is recognized as a misdemeanor. It didn't make any sense that the way the laws were written, the way the laws are today is that if you committed a fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct, basically against an 18-year-old, it was a third-degree felony, but against a 15-year-old, it was a misdemeanor. So it was just to cover that gap so that it gives the proper punishment for the type of crime that is committed with it. So, Madam Speaker, that's the gist, and that's the proposal that's presented in this legislation. Look to my colleagues for their support in this piece of legislation so they can fill this gap, so that we can continue to protect those victims most vulnerable and those victims who have become victimized as a result of criminal sexual conduct, and take care of that disparity in the age with regards to the punishment. I look forward to the discussions from my colleagues on the floor, but for the whole passage of this legislation too as well. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On bill number 142-36LS, I recognize Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this legislation, and I thank the honor for introducing it. I think this covers a gap that wasn't covered before previously in statute, and I look forward to our colleagues voting on this. Let's continue to protect our youth and continue to strengthen our laws against these sexual perpetrators, against our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. On bill number 142-36LS, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? If not, then Senator Ada, you may close on the bill. I mean, Senator Blas, you may close on the bill.
Thank you, well, you know, it's almost appropriate and fitting because, Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to move to place Senator Ian Tony Ada as the sponsor to the legislation.
I will waive that this motion, this amendment be put in writing for the adding sponsors to the bills. So, on the motion to add Senator Ada as sponsor of the bill, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and the congestion and everything, I'd like to be able to include my fellow law enforcement personnel officers too, who have in their careers also helped to prosecute or arrest individual sexual perpetrators, Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Peter Terlai, and also Senator James Moylan, as sponsors.
All right, on the motion to add as cosponsors Senators Joseph Augustine, Senator Jose Peter Terlai, Senator Moylan, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, with that, I would like to make motion to move bill 142-36LS into the third reading file.
On the motion to place bill number 142-36LS on the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Colleagues, before we proceed with the next bill, I'd just like to welcome again to our session floor the members of the Clerk's Office. Our Sergeant of Arms, of course, is always here, we have pages, and we have the Legal Bureau with our temporary Legislative Council, Darlene Istokio-Haiten, and Stacy Salas, our Assistant Legislative Counsel, Sizouas Massey. All right, we proceed now with bill 162-36LS. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to accept bill number 162-36COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, and substituted on the floor. It's introduced by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, it's an act to amend section 49107F of chapter 49, section 50119 of chapter 50, section 51204 of chapter 51, all of title 10 Guam Code annotated, and to amend section 10109G of chapter 10, title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to authorizing the continuous appropriation of funds for program funds maintained by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency.
On the motion to accept the substitute, the bill as amended by the committee and further substituted on the floor, is there any objection to that motion? Hearing and seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to place bill number 162-36COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, and substituted on the floor in the third reading file, and I would like to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill 162-36 aims to allow Guam Environmental Protection Agency to comply with the conditions of grant funds received by Guam EPA from US EPA and to enable Guam EPA to fully carry out its statutory purpose by ensuring that Guam EPA acquires and retains control over the funds generated by Guam EPA programs. One such requirement is outlined by the conditions of Guam EPA's consolidated grant is the administrator's ability to control and maintain programmatic funding for revenue generated by the agency. Presently, revenue generated through the agency's key programs, which include the air pollution control, pesticide management, the litter control, and water pollution control programs, are subjected to legislative control and appropriation and therefore underlined with the criteria of the consolidated grant. During the September session, about nine amendments were proffered, which I consulted with Guam EPA in collaboration with BBMR in the intervening period, and this substitute bill, before use the version that was reviewed, and received support by Guam EPA. The amendments to the substitute bill provide language that will increase control of the special funds by Guam EPA in addition to maintaining their budget, Guam EPA's budget to be submitted as part of the executive budget. Additionally, the changes that were made to the litter control revolving fund with the passage of bill 116-36, now Public Law 36-61, were incorporated into the section We also received testimony by the administrator, which I would like to maybe make the motion to append to the committee report at this time.
On the motion to append the letter by the administrator?
Yes.
Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
So it would serve our island well to, that we do everything we must to further secure this precious funding with accountability and transparency measures intact. I ask my colleagues for their support in supporting the agency's goals to sustain its own operations. Bill 162-36 will help create the foundation upon which Guam EPA can establish greater autonomy needed for this vital regulatory agency and for the health of our people and environment. Sizouas Massey.
Sizouas Massey, Senator Perez, is there any senator who would like to be recognized on bill number 162-36COR? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, if I could ask the sponsor of this bill, shield you to a question with regards to the EPA funds?
Please state your question.
I want to inquire, and I know we've discussed this with with regards to the public hearing, but I wanted to inquire the amount of money that we're talking about, and essentially the language in here would, at least in my interpretation, would allow the administrator to determine the use and then report back to the board on a quarterly basis. So I wanted to get clarification with that because I want to know how much money is involved. The Guam EPA has a board, and normally through the process, I mean, if we're removing the legislature from appropriating these funds and have these funds automatically appropriated to the agency, which I don't have an issue with. I think the Guam EPA board should require a budget presentation and therefore approve the expenditures of these funds versus the administrator simply reporting back. We do that with all the line agencies and pretty much the autonomous agencies have boards that oversee and authorize the expenditure of monies that have been provided or generated within that respective entity. So I just want to get clarification with regards to that because I do have a concern for any administrator to simply make that determination without board authorization if they have a board.
Would Senator Perez yield to that question?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker. And with the substitute version, it does address that. So the quarterly reporting was actually amended. And so now the administrator shall submit a proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year to the Board of Directors of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, which shall include how such funds are being used in the implementation of this chapter. So that's repeated with the different funds.
And then I wanted, as I mentioned in my other question, how much money are, in general, are we talking about on an annual basis?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do. And so judging from the last budget that we just approved, the total amount of funding coming from special funds to Guam EPA is roughly in the eight hundred thousand range.
Thank you very much to the sponsor. I appreciate, Madam Speaker, the opportunity to ask those questions and the change with regards to the implementation of language that would require any administrator of Guam EPA to have to go through board approval with regards to a proposed budget on the expenditure of these funds. Certainly, it's unfortunate, and I will state that again. And while we often talk about environmental protection as a government, we invest so little, so little money into the actual operations of the agency. And it's been close to thirty years since I first started working at Guam EPA. Back then, the bulk of the funds that actually operated the agency were provided by the federal government. And to this day, the bulk of the cost of the operations that address environmental enforcement on Guam is funded by the federal government. And while we give a lot of lip service to environmental protection, we very much, as with regards to our appropriations on the floor of this legislature, provide very little money, very little local appropriation with regards to the agency. So certainly allowing them to have access to these funds through their special accounts is a step. But colleagues, I think we need to keep in mind the fact that this agency has not grown, and it has not grown. It pretty much about has the same staffing capacity as it did when I was there all those years ago. So certainly, I hope in the future, as we look and as we talk about the importance of our environment, and boy, don't we talk about it, but we do very little when it comes up to real dollars and cents to provide local funding to actually strengthen environmental enforcement on Guam, which I still see as a constant problem. I think the Marbo Cave situation that we saw last year, I don't buy the excuse that they don't have enough personnel to oversee a project of that magnitude because to me, you prioritize your resources. I've done it. I know what it's like to do that. No government entity probably is going to argue that they have so much more resources than they need. But I think we need to be mindful of that. We need to hold people's feet to the fire that are performing these jobs to make sure that they're actually out there. But at the same time also, we need to be more proactive in providing resources because we provide money to so many other things that many people on Guam would consider least priority. But when you're talking about safe air, safe drinking water, the critical things that we need to live, I think we should have a greater responsibility in actually providing more funds. And as I mentioned, at least this bill that's been sponsored by the Oversight Chair is a step in that direction, as long as they have accountability with regards to how those funds are spent. I'm certainly supportive of that and I certainly would also like to ask the sponsor of the bill, if I could be a second co-sponsor on this bill. With that, thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to ask questions and comment with regards to this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On Bill 162-36COR, Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And, you know, I also like to thank the previous speaker, one who's actually worked at EPA and saw the trials and tribulations that happened there and then the destruction of people who are not following, you know, rules when it comes to protecting our environment. So I really like to also thank the author of this legislation to incorporate, even though this bill, what it does now, it allows that these fees and fines go directly to EPA for expenditure without legislation appropriations. You know, the environment is very sensitive and the longer you wait to rectify any damages, it could extend further out to be even more damaging. So it's important that they have these funds at hand to address any issues, especially emergency issues. But I greatly appreciate the fact that, you know, still keeping this body, who is the purse strings of this government, to let us know how this money is being spent by providing that. So that was incorporated in the substitute bill and I thank the sponsor for including that. So we are kept abreast of what's going on. So that being said, I also, you know, like to be a co-sponsor of this legislation if the author would allow me to because I truly believe that it's important that we maintain, you know, our due diligence as well as staying on top of things like this. And my support is not just on this measure, but my support is all around on the environment of our community, our island. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. On the Bill 162-36, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I close, I'd like to make the amendment to add co-sponsors, Senator Joanne Brown and Senator Telo Taitegui, and perhaps anybody, all senators, if there's no objection to that.
Is there any objection to that motion? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I do share some of the concerns from the previous, one of the previous speakers regarding resources. And I have addressed that in a bill that's awaiting hearing. And what that would do, just, this is, I guess, a point of information, is that it would allow them to have access to the used tax. So by law, they're entitled to twenty percent of used tax. What's needed is that Guam EPA would have to provide testimony and have a public hearing during the budgetary process for them to be able to access those funds. So I have been encouraging them to come up with a budget to help fund this very vital regulatory agency. So yes, there are so many things. I feel that the environment is, there's many layers to it and, you know, you basically have to approach it at one thing at a time. And this is one measure that's so important that would help them to establish autonomy within the regulatory agency. So I appreciate the support of my colleagues in this measure. Sidoz Massey.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Perez. On the motion to place Bill Number 162-36COR in the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. All right. We are now on Bill Number 173-36LS. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As early reported by the committee chair for 173, that the adjustment in the voter committee voting sheet is being completed and therefore, Madam Speaker, wish to move 173 to the bottom of the second reading file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Senator Taitegui, do you have an objection?
No, I don't, Madam Chair. I just couldn't hear what he was saying. It was muffled. Can you please repeat?
On the motion to move Bill Number 173-36LS to the bottom of the second reading file?
There was something else before that.
The reason why? Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As explained earlier by committee chair, the voting sheet of the committee is being resubmitted and that's just about completed. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. There's been a motion to move Bill 173-36LS to the bottom of the second reading file. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Renowned Bill Number 174-36LS. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 174LS as amended by Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, as introduced by myself and co-sponsored by committee chair Senator Joseph Augustine, which is an act to amend subsection 15201 and 15206 to Chapter 15, Subsection 3104 and 3105 of Chapter 3 and Subsection 6108 of Chapter 6, and add a new subsection 3102.1 Gulf of Chapter 3, all of Title 3 Guam Code annotated, and to add a new subsection 3101.3 Hotel to Chapter 3 of Title 16. Guam Code annotated relative to addressing election-related timelines associated with the primary election nomination petitions and voter registration, who, third reading filed, and I wish to discuss, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's a brief introduction, but basically, the Guam Election Commission has worked with the sponsor of the bill and the committee chair on their election, updating their elections requirements and have come to us for the introduction of this bill. Basically, it's adjusting the primary date from the first instead of the last Saturday of August and timelines for filing nomination papers and fees by increasing the timelines to give the Guam Election Commission additional time. They did likewise for the filing of nomination petitions, again, increasing the days for review as their request and the time for registration from twenty-one days to twenty-one days instead of ten. This also affected the place of registration as well. And basically, we are in the place of registration, adding a G and H, as mentioned in the title of the report, G being the applicant may register electronically in accordance with this section for the time and registration is open until twenty-one days prior to the election. And Section 7, where the applicant may register in accordance with this section from time registration is open until twenty-one days prior to the election. These changes were reviewed by the Election Commission Board and made in accordance with their guidelines. And basically, we are just assisting them to update their election requirements, and this would greatly help in their efficiency in providing the election to the people of Guam. I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Is there any senator who'd like to be recognized on Bill 174-36LS, Senator Taitegui?
Just a point of inquiry, Madam Chair. Since this is an amended version, I don't see the double underlined or what has changed from the first original bill. Can the author please explain what changes were made?
Are you speaking on the bill? You can ask the author to yield.
Yeah. Well, it's just, I'm not taking my time at this point, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, or is that considered part of my time on the floor?
I'm going to consider that part of your time if we proceed down this road.
Okay, then I'll hold back, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Speaker, because, you know, I need a little bit more time to review. So I'll hold.
On Bill 174-36LS, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill, interestingly, is similar to a bill that was introduced in a few legislatures back, also at the request of the GEC. And the issue at hand at that time was always one of efficiency, one of making sure that all the, that the staff had sufficient time to get ballots out to off-island voters and in time for counting at the election. But mostly, it was not only efficiency of their service, but also it was a cost-cutting measure that has always been at the forefront. How do they do it better and how do they do it at a lesser cost to the government of Guam? And with that, I rise in support of this. This bill, though, will have to result in a bit of a culture change in that it now ups the time for people to apply and submit nomination papers. But the offset of that is it allows voters more time to register. It opens up the window a little bit more. Not that they don't have the time now, but at least once the campaign season does begin, the concerted effort to get more people registered to vote can also be ramped up. And with the addition of online voting, which this legislature, a few legislatures passed, also provide it for. I think that the key here is there is a sensitivity to not allowing people to go to butt up against the actual election. Oftentimes, the trend is to allow people as close to the election to file nomination papers, to register to vote. And so we're, in some ways, we're going backwards. But, and that is, you know, sort of a, it's a policy call. It's a matter of whether you agree with butting up against a deadline to give more opportunity or expanding the deadline and pushing it earlier, further away, to allow for convenience of operations. I think in this case, because elections are costly and that tends to be the bane of many people on this island with regard to primary elections and everything, I think that it is proper for us to address how, in the grand scheme of things, how we can look at making this government more efficient. And perhaps that is the one good reason to support this measure. It does provide for more efficiency at a cost savings, but what we are sacrificing is allowing more people to come into the fold and to submit nomination papers closer to the time of the election. And that's the only, perhaps, drawback to this is it is a disadvantage in that people will have to make a commitment earlier. And oftentimes, that decision, you know, is difficult for people because there are costs associated with initiating a campaign and even more costs associated with running a campaign. So it has a disadvantage to people that don't have that luxury of either time or the wherewithal, the money, or the ability to gain money, to engage in a campaign. So it really is one of those things that just will force us to think, you know, are we going for efficiency of service and cost cutting or are we going for true accommodation of people that are interested in seeking elected office? And that's the balance that we have to strike. And that's the balance that we have to strike. But where I am in support of this is, this issue has been brought to us by the Election Commission over the years. It was something that I attempted to do. This legislative body actually passed a bill, a similar bill, but it was subsequently vetoed by the governor. But this time around, I think that if we are looking at efficiencies of operation, perhaps this is a sacrifice that we have to make to ensure that, you know, monies can be saved, where they can be saved in this government. So I do rise in support of this bill, but I just wanted to bring about the consequences of moving the deadline further back. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Is there any other Senator who would like to be recognized on Bill Number 174-36LS? If not, then if I could ask Senator Perez to preside. I apologize, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, may I ask for a one-minute recess, please? I think I don't have the correct documents here, but just one minute.
We are now in recess.
Speaker Chulahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to rise in support of the bill. I think it's good and it's about time that we, in the legislature, have amended our laws to allow the Election Commission to fully comply with the Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act, which requires our Election Commission to send ballots to people overseas, those serving in the armed forces, and they just need additional time to do that. And in order to get those ballots out in time, they need to print those ballots earlier. And so, the bill would help them to comply with that. And while I hate to see our primary election moved up sooner, because, and our candidate deadline moved up sooner, which this bill does, I hate to see that because I would like to extend the time to recruit candidates. However, in order to get the ballots out on time, I understand that we're just going to have to move those deadlines up sooner to comply with federal law. So, new candidates, you know, I hope that we're going to have a, make sure everyone understands that the election, the primary election, will be earlier if this bill passes. New candidates are going to have to decide earlier, get their petitions in earlier, and get their names on that ballot on time. So those parts of the bill, I support. The bill also does some other things, which changes the voter registration deadline, as previously discussed. And those deadlines, Madam Speaker, I really don't want to change. Right now, I would like to continue with our policy of allowing voters to register, you know, as close to the voting date as possible, as humanly possible for the Election Commission to accommodate. And I think that the Election Commission has shown us that they have been capable of doing that. Of course, they're strained for resources, and I'm hoping that, you know, with the resources we've provided them in our most recent budget, and that the Appropriations Chair continues to monitor, that we will be able to ensure that they have sufficient resources to continue to accept voter registration up until 10 days prior to the election and not 21 days prior to the election, which this bill proposes. And so, for that reason, I'm, I'd like to make an amendment to several sections of the bill to, I'm going to remove the sections from this bill entirely, which means that we will keep our existing law in these sections. So beginning with the floor amendment on Section 4 of the bill, this is for times for registration. I would like to remove that entire section, delete it from the bill, so that we will continue to allow 21 days prior to any election, the registration rolls, I mean, sorry, that to continue to allow that 10 days prior to any election, the registration rolls shall be closed, and no further affidavits of registration shall be accepted by the Committee. And not change that to 21. So, my motion would be to delete Section 4 of the bill. And that would restore us back to 10 days, or keep us at 10 days as we are today, 10 days deadline, to register voters. And this is for voters, not candidates, not anybody else, but these are for voters, and this is where I feel like our policy should be, as in previous policy, to expand the So that's my first amendment, is to remove Section 4 of the bill.
Okay, so, we are going to bifurcate this amendment to deletion of Section 4 first, and then we'll take this deletion of Section 5 next. So are there any members wishing to speak on the amendment to delete Section 4 of the bill? Senator San Augustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On our amendment, I'm in support of our amendment. We spoke to the Guam Election Commission, and they have no objection to the whole page on our amendment, which is Section 4 and 5. So it's the next amendment is when we'll have an objection to it, and we'll explain on that nature. But as far as this amendment of Section 4, we have no, I have no objections to that, and we spoke to the author of the bill, and we're consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator San Augustin. Are there any other members wishing to speak on the deletion of Section 4 of the bill? I'd like to offer the sponsor to close on her amendment.
I will yield closing.
I will yield closing.
Are there any objections to removal of Section 4? Okay, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I don't have a comment, but if the co-sponsor of this legislation may so yield, I have a little bit of confusion as to why the GEC initially requested and pushed for this extension and then now is saying not to. Because the whole deficiency that they were talking about had to do with, per the committee report, with the ability to scrub the applications, to verify the petitions, nominating petitions, and all of that.
Sorry, Senator Torres, if we could just close on this amendment first? And we could discuss, we can bring that up in another moment, but I think we would like to dispose of this amendment.
Yes, my reason for asking you the question is because the answer of the, because the prior, the co-sponsor spoke on the amendment, and so I have a question to that statement that he did. So if you will so permit me, because that determines whether I will be in support of this or not. It's all in discussion of the amendment, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Senator Sanagastin, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So the question is, why is there a stark change in the position of the GEC from, we want you to do this, to it's okay that you now take it entirely away? It's just confusing. Thank you.
Yes, and I understand, because I asked that question also. One of the main emphasis is that, as we spoke to the Guam Election Commission just a few minutes ago, we presented to them the two different amendments. And I'm just going to talk about both amendments so that my colleagues will understand the whole picture, not just assuming we're talking about parts of it. And if you would indulge me with that, I would move on that.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, on this first amendment, which has a second amendment within the same page, but the next amendment identifies the electronic registration. They ask that that stays intact. And for the purpose of, this is where they have to do research to confirm and verify the identity of the individual that's registering. They said they can work with the 10 days. They wanted a little bit more days. But if they can, at least if anything, increase the days of electronically, because it's to validate the register. Everyone else, they've been working on it. They were hoping for extra days. If they can get with it, they'll work with it, and then they'll try again. And because this is nothing new, the election commission's been trying for years. I've tried several bills, and so did my colleagues, to make the amendments. But this is what they said they'd be willing to work with, as much as they want, the 21 days. They'll work with the 10. But as long as we keep the electronic part, 21 days for verification and validation of the register. All right, I hope that answers the questions.
Thank you, Senator Sanagastin. Senator Torres, does that satisfy your question?
It satisfies the question, Madam Speaker, in terms of why they changed their mind. But the logic really is just a little disconcerting. If the emphasis is to give applicants, who are the applicants for elected office, more time to submit their things than, or, I'm sorry, less time to submit their, they're given more time now to submit their applications. I just feel that the, if the concern is to allow for more people to not only participate actively in submitting their applications and participate actively by registering to vote and giving them ample time as close to the election, then I think that it should be a consistent thing. So he did answer my question, but I'm just, I just felt that they had a position that was strong and valid and rational. And now it seems like a pick and choose is not, I just think that the intent is a little watered down now and a little disconcerting. But thank you for the chance to ask a question.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Are there any objections to this amendment? Or, sorry. Speaker Chalahi?
I'd like to close on the amendment.
Okay, yes, yes, please do.
All right. Okay, again, this amendment to Section 4 of the bill is regarding the times for registration of voters, not for candidates, but for voters. And so what I'm trying to do here, by removing this section from our bill, is to continue with current law that allows voters to register all the way up to 10 days prior to the election, not to restrict them and require them to register earlier than that, but to continue with what they are currently allowed to do, and that's 10 days prior to the election. So that's what's going to occur with the removal of Section 4. The removal of Section 4 will not in any way impact candidate deadlines. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are there any objections to this amendment? Seeing that there are no objections, amendment passes. So to the second part of this amendment on Section 5, the deletion of Section 5, Speaker Chalahi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This, my amendment again is to remove Section 5 from the bill so that we will leave in place the current Section 3105 of Title III, which is, which allows the Election Commission to deem advisable and convenient from the time the registration is open until 10 days prior to an election. We're going to allow them to continue with that policy by removing this section from the bill. And again, this is the registration of voters. And this does not affect their ability to comply with the federal law, like the other sections we discussed earlier. So this is really just, it's dependent on their resources. So I'm sure that their original intent in asking us to give them 21 days instead of 10 is because of resources. They feel, you know, they want more time. They need more staff. But I'm hoping that we accommodate that as opposed to cutting off voters. You know, we're weighing two things here. And that is, you know, do we give the Election Commission more time to vet voters? Or do we push them a little and allow voters to register all the way up until 10 days prior to an election? And I believe that has been our policy. We have been very progressive about it, consistent with other states, who actually have found a couple that have shorter deadlines than 10 days and some that actually allow people to register on the day of election, you know, despite having deadlines. So this is to, this is just to keep that progressive policy of allowing voters to register as late as the Election Commission can handle. And so that would be my amendment to this section, to remove Section 5.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are there any members wishing to speak on this amendment? Senator Moylan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just like to read what Guam Election Commission stated in their testimony at the public hearing. Written testimony was provided by Acting Executive Director Elizabeth B. Santos in regards to Bill 17436, specifically to these sections that we are discussing in the current amendment. So Guam Election Commission supports the changes described in Section 4, 5, and 6, because Guam Election Commission will have ample time to process affidavits of regulations to ensure the accuracy and completeness of all voter information. The additional time also allows the Guam Election Commission to vet and verify voter information and file affidavits of registration before certifying the voter registration roster and further enables the Guam Election Commission ample time to print out the official voter signature roster for each election precinct. So that was their purpose of these Sections 4, 5, and 6, which we are, we'll be discussing in these amendments. So just wanted to remind my colleagues why they have included this or we have included this in the committee as we're discussing this bill at this time. Again, as the committee chair has stated, the Election Commission is workable on these amendments. But just to read for the record, this is why those were placed in the bill at this current time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Are there any other members wishing to speak on this amendment? Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. This was essentially the, what I had described earlier about the drawback to this bill, where it impacted the ability of people to apply to register to vote. And I think this legislature can also aspire, with the Guam Election Commission, to continue to encourage online voter registration and allow people to vote, especially in this COVID environment, to register to vote even sooner. At some point, we may even look to the sample of other states where they allow voter registration all the way up to election day. But at this point, I think this is exactly the amendment that will satisfy that concern about what we took away from the voters when we initially introduced this substituted bill. So I rise in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Are there any other members wishing to speak on this amendment? Seeing that there are no others wishing to speak, I would like to offer the floor to Speaker Chalahi for closing.
Thank you. I would like to thank my colleague for speaking immediately prior to me, that yes, I think we are consistent in purpose here in that we would like to allow voters to register as late as possible. And so right now, by this amendment, we will allow them to register at the commission's headquarters 10 days prior to the election. We have seen that the Election Commission has been able to successfully and accurately do this. It's one of their major purposes. And we would just like them to continue with that work. So thank you. And I ask for support on removal of Section 5. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any members who object to this amendment? Okay, seeing that there are no objections, amendment passes. Speaker Chalahi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I passed out an amendment to change Sections 6 and 7, but I'm going to withdraw those. So please ignore that amendment also on your table. I was going to do the same for the Sections 6 and 7, which are the motor voter registration and the electronic registration, where I was going to say, why are we shortening that period to 21 days preceding an election instead of allowing them to continue to register electronically up to 10 days prior to an election? Now, this one, the Election Commission pretty much insists that they need time on these electronic voter registrations and the motor voter registration in order to vet those. And so I'm going to withdraw this amendment from the floor, and I'm not making any changes to this because they are different, because they are just a different format that they're submitted in. And they're, you know, done by other parties, submitted to the Election Commission. So the Election Commission wants additional time in those situations. But anyone who needs to register will still be allowed to register up to 10 days prior to an election at the commission's headquarters. So perhaps it's a good compromise there. So I'm going to remove that. We're not going to consider, you know, those amendments to Sections 6 and 7. I'm not moving that right now. But back to the bill, if I may. I just want to make one more point. The effective date. So this bill before us has been amended by the committee, and the effective date has been changed. Instead of effective immediately, which would have made it in place for the upcoming elections this August, it now says the effective date shall be effective on January 1, 2023. And so if I could just ask the sponsor if he would yield to, do we really want to put this off for the next election or for the immediately upcoming election? I think if it's a good policy, we should make it effective immediately so that it affects those voters overseas in this upcoming election. And we give the Election Commission time immediately to do what we're trying to allow them to do here. So if the sponsor would yield just to the effective date, why we would want to delay that?
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just request a brief recess, please, to further discuss with my colleague.
We are now in recess. We are back from recess. We left off with Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Per the request or the question posed on the floor, can we make this effective as soon as possible? Absolutely. I agree with that. Thank you, Madam Speaker, upon enactment.
All right, thank you for that response. Speaker Chalahi, does that answer your question or?
Thank you. I would like to thank the author for yielding on the question and the Appropriations Chair for discussing this with the Election Commission. And so I would like to make that amendment. And that would be to restore in Section 9, to change what says this act shall be effective on January 1, 2023, and to replace that with the act shall be effective immediately upon enactment. And I do not have that in writing, Madam Speaker, so I either ask for a waiver of the rules, but I hate to do that, so I will wait. That is being, but that's the amendment if the discussion can proceed. It's to restore the, to make this bill effective immediately, not to not wait until January 1, 2023.
Okay, so the motion is to waive a written amendment for the, to read this act shall be effective immediately upon enactment. Are there any objections or anyone would like to speak on that? Senator, Senator Taregui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, are we, or Madam Speaker, are we just making the ruling to allow this amendment to be on the floor without writing it out? Is that what we're doing? Is that the motion? Because after that, then we can discuss the amendment.
Yeah, I'm not making that motion. So this motion will be passed out in writing momentarily. But I would suggest we just proceed with discussion, if that's possible.
Madam Speaker, we could just have a quick recess so we can get it in writing and be done with it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Moment recess. Moment recess. We're back from recess. Speaker Tjolai, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues, for your patience. So this floor amendment again is to amend Section 9 of the bill to read this act shall be effective upon enactment. On advice of legal, please remove that word immediately. This act shall be effective on, upon enactment. So it's no longer waiting until January 2023. That would be my motion.
Are there any members wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Tadegui, you're recognized.
See, just most of Madam Speaker for the opportunity to speak on this amendment with great concern. You know, here we are, this body in January, close to the end of January, on an election year, creating this type of legislation to be affected for this election year. You know, Madam Speaker, I know there's probably no sympathy to individuals who look at people who want to run for office, elected office. You know, it's almost making it difficult for them to run or, you know, with no support. And it's a very, very difficult road to go down for an individual who wants to run for public office. You have to get petitions signed, you have to raise money. You know, there's a lot of variables that should be considered. You know, when I saw this legislation and saw the effective date, I thought, okay, great. This is something that we can, you know, this year, everybody prepares for in the next election year. But so, you know, for us to be doing this, this bill should have been introduced last year, at least by August last year, or November, a year before the election starts. Actually, the primary starts in August or September. It should have been introduced then. The majority of people who plan to run usually decide a year out. Even though this is what, only a few more months than a year, it's still, Madam Chair or Madam Speaker, something that should not be introduced during an election year. So I have difficulty with this amendment and changing it. And I'm going to have to object. Thank you, Madam Chair. Or Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Senator Joanne Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly can understand the desire to want to facilitate having more people in our community vote in an election, considering the fact that the numbers continue to decline. And I think our last election two years ago is a very good example of how we have less people and less interest, I assume, of actually coming out to vote for candidates. And I'm sure there may be a whole host of reasons as to why that's the case. We certainly want to encourage in our democracy to have the direct participation and decision-making of our people, because ultimately, we're simply just representatives, even though some of us think we're more than that. So I'm not so much concerned about the fact of having as many of our people register to vote and participate in election. I think we all want to encourage that. We certainly want to make sure that individuals that are elected to office exist at the mandate of the people. And it's another issue for another day, but I have to say that while we're shortening the timeline, I don't look at it so much, Madam Speaker, as an issue of participation, but eligibility. And perhaps that's something we need to look at, because while we are shortening the timelines and we've allowed in the past amendments to the law that allow people to file online and do all that with regards to their registration, one thing that did come up in the course of these hearings is that the Election Commission did at a question that I had asked, state that they are not verifying as to whether or not people that register to vote are even eligible to vote. And I think that's an important criteria, the eligibility, the right to vote. While people may be signing off, say, oh, yes, you know, I meet the requirements, I'm a U.S. citizen, and all these other wonderful things that we need to be in order to vote, we have no system set in place that actually verifies that. And we've had examples on previous elections where unfortunately, it does exist, you know, that bad side of our community, even though maybe a small percentage. But we've had elections where individuals have participated and contributed to voter fraud, some that have, you know, gone to the Election Commission ahead of time and voted, and then showed up at the voting on the day of the election and showed up to try and vote again. And questions as to, in other elections, one gubernatorial election in particular, where the candidates, the gubernatorial team that had lost that election, had filed and had pursued a court case, that we had individuals in this community that had passed away, but miraculously showed up to vote on the day of the election. So it has happened here. I mean, people argue the voter fraud issue at the national level with regards to the last presidential campaign. We don't even need to go there. We just need to even look here. And I'm sure that's something probably in another day to address legislation. But certainly, of course, anything we can do to encourage our people to vote. But I also want to make sure that the people that are voting are eligible, that they actually are the residents of this community that have the legal right to vote, because I think our vote is a very precious thing and how we put people in office with the hope that they're going to do the best thing in the interests of our people. And right now, there is no system in place for the Guam Election Commission to verify. I remember when I had to vote, I had to bring my passport, you know, to show that, yes, you know, I'm a U.S. citizen. And I hate to see that, but gosh, when it comes to power, greed, and money, oh my goodness, when that ugly face rears its ugly head, people do some really not-so-good things and abuse that process, abuse the privilege that we have. And I certainly hate to see it, but it's there, it happens. And I think it's something we need to look a step further on, and something the Election Commission, I think, should be busy doing on the off-years when there are not elections, so that people, when they do come forth and say, yes, I'm an eligible voter, I can register to vote, and by all means, if you are, then I encourage you, please do vote. But I think we need to also ensure that the people that are voting are eligible to vote, and that's a critical issue. And I'm hoping the timeline is not going to affect, obviously not going to affect it if we do it for this upcoming election, because the Election Commission is not verifying eligibility of individuals that are signing up to vote. So I think, colleagues, that's just something to keep in mind. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Are there any other members wishing to speak on this amendment? Senator Moynihan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Appreciate the comments regarding this amendment. I agree with this amendment. The object was to have this bill taken care of sooner, much, much, much sooner. The Election Commission also agrees with the amendment, too. We had the opportunity to discuss with Maria about it as well. Just for some timeline understandings, the bill was introduced in August. We had a public hearing in October, and we are here today to move things forward. And why not expedite it and get it effective upon enactment as introduced by the speaker in the amendment of this section? I agree with this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Speaker Tjolai, you're open to close. My apologies. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in opposition to this amendment. I think had the Election Commission not come out for the call of this coming election and already distributed packets, it's already on the website, it's on the paper packets that have been picked up by individuals as to the timelines and dates, and to change the rules in the middle of the game. And I agree with my colleague from Timuining that, you know, this is an election year. And I think it would have been more appropriate that this be effective January 2023 instead of January 2022. That way, it does not affect this coming election. And the perception of the public is, why are they changing the rules in the middle of the game again? I think we've had enough back and forth, you know, with the public and why bills are introduced and laws pass in the time that it passes. But at least let's not turn around and give in to that. Let's ensure that, yes, we're making these amendments, yes, we're making this change in law, but it won't be effective until after this coming election. So again, I have to stand in opposition to this amendment, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Speaker Tjolai, you're open to close.
Thank you very much. May I just begin by saying that that was an excellent argument by the previous speakers. And, you know, I agree that if I had my way, I would allow candidates to become candidates up until the day of the election. That's what I would do if I could. But we've got procedures that candidates have to go through, they have to be verified, they have to be eligible. And the Election Commission, especially with our open government law now, they have to approve these candidate lists, these candidate submissions, they have to approve a ballot, all of this done in advance and consistent with this bill, consistent with federal law to allow the Election Commission to make sure that we reach voters with these ballots. That's That's really the point. And so I agree, I hate to see any hardship on candidates, because I don't think we just want more candidates, but we need more candidates. So I'm all for anything that would make it easier for candidates, except when we are making it harder for voters or the Election Commission to get the ballots to the voters. That's my exception here, is that we are going to allow the Commission more time to approve those ballots, approve the candidates, and get the ballots secured. We have contention sometime as to whether that candidate should be on the ballot or not, and the Election Commission has to address any issue regarding that ballot before they mail it out. And this is what we're trying to do, is that. We're not trying to limit voters. And this federal law that requires Election Commission to send these, to get this ballot approved on time, get it sent out in enough time for the voters to receive it, especially those who are in active military duty, that's really the main point, is to allow them more time to get the approved ballots out to those on active military duty and returned on time. So, and counted on time, so we can move forward with the general election. So I am not trying, and I don't think the bill is trying to make it harder for candidates, because I think we would all agree, we want to allow more candidates. I think we need to be creative and find more ways to assist candidates. But we can't, but we got, I think it's fair to allow this law to go into place now, so that the Election Commission can do its best to get the ballot out to voters in this upcoming election, and that we don't go even one more election without getting the ballots out to voters promptly and on time as we can, in accordance with the Overseas Citizens Absentee Voting Act. And if the Election Commission tells us in the future that they are able to do that in shortened time, then I'm all for, let's go back to the shortened timeframe to allow more candidates. Otherwise, we're going to have to hustle to help these candidates, to get their nominating petitions in 30 days sooner than what was done in the past, and to get nominees approved by the Election Commission 30 days sooner. That is a hardship on candidates, I fully agree with that. However, I just think if we're making this important change to the law, that we do it for the upcoming election, and that is, again, just to make sure that the voters get the ballots. And I want to point out that the public hearing that this bill had, had the effective date immediately, and the Election Commission had no objection to that. And and so I'm hoping prospective candidates are watching, or that they will be promptly informed by the Election Commission if this bill should pass as to the new deadline. But I'm also hoping that with the amendments we made to the bill, that voters will be reassured that they will be able to register to vote all the way up until 10 days prior to the election, and that will not be restricted. So I ask my colleagues to support the amendment, and thank you, members.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blas' point of inquiry.
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker, before you move before you move to the vote. And it obviously, I think this is where, you know, now we're going to put our newly constable work here. It obviously appears that, you know, this legislation, while it is relative to an election, it appears that there's a conversation between voter requirements and candidate requirements, which appears to be two different subjects. You know, I'm stuck in a dilemma here. I'd like to be able to see it effective immediately for one side, but not for the other. But so is there a way that we can take just a little bit of a recess so that we can get the clarification?
I object, Madam Chair. I've already closed on the bill, I mean, on the amendment, and maybe if he's speaking on the bill, he can raise that point, or I could just call for the vote on the amendment.
Okay, so, yes, Senator Blas, the Speaker closed on her amendment, so, yes, I would allow you to speak on the bill at a different
Yeah, close on the
When we dispose of this amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so are there any objections to the amendment? Okay, so I would like to call for the vote. Those in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. Motion fails.
All right, I believe I still have the floor
Yes.
On closing my remarks on this bill, I would just say, I'm still in support of the bill. And I think if we, if it's true that the Election Commission needed our help to amend the law, to allow them a little bit more time to approve these ballots, to get the nominations in 30 days earlier, so that they can get them on ballots and get them approved in front of the people of Guam and open government, with enough notice to everyone as to what's going to be on that ballot that they approve, that we support this legislation. And especially with the amendments where we are not impacting adversely the current rights of voters to register all the way up until 10 days prior to the election. So I support the bill, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are there any members wishing to speak on this bill? Senator Talai, you're recognized. Tadegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this legislation. You know, reviewing this and understanding the concerns of the Guam Election Commission, I think it's, you know, it's been working, but they've had some issues. Trying to assist those, especially with the off-island votes, is understandable, you know, providing them the resources that this legislature does every year for them when they do ask. I don't think we've ever denied it. If this is going, this bill is going to help and assist them to be more diligent and allow individuals the right to vote, then, and especially with the last amendment failing, I think, you know, I do stand in support of this legislation. I think there are more things that we can actually do to assist the Guam Election Commission, but most especially to assist the community in having that ability to come and register and vote, because that's where it boils down to, most especially. I'm not talking so much about the candidates part, but I, you know, I mean, that's, it's very difficult, like, the Speaker from Chonia had mentioned earlier, finding candidates to run for office. But I think mostly it's about the ability for people to cast their vote, which is very important. And I'm praying that not only just to cast the vote, but making a very educated vote on who they want in office. So this might not fix everything, or assist anything, a lot of things that we don't see in front of us today, but at least we have the option in the future to make any changes. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and the time to speak on this.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. On the bill, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the bill and the intent of the bill. I think that you made, you know, a good argument during the discussion of your proposed amendment, but I think also one of my colleagues from Baragada made a good, you know, really motion for a consideration, because it is, I think we can bifurcate this issue. At this time, I ask for a recess to possibly consider an amendment to allow for the Uokava section of the primary to go forward with the others to be, to not disrupt the submission of packets and the like. And to, I think we can accomplish both, Madam Speaker, so can you give us at least a short recess to discuss that possibility?
All right, is there an amendment being prepared? It's going to
I'd like to talk to Legal, and just to see if that, if an amendment would be appropriate in terms of enactment of a section, whether that had to be standalone, I just want to get a legal
All right, we're taking a three-minute recess.
Thank you.